We'll call this meeting to order and ask the Councilman Troy Horvath to leave us on the indication.
Well, you're very thankful for today with that, for what our city, I know for our citizens, for those that serve and opportunity to serve you all. I pray that the things that we do tonight would be pleasing to you, that we empower ourselves in a way that shows what we believe about you. Just pray that you help us to make good decisions and be good stories of what you've blessed us with.
Again, please stay in place.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right, we're going to have a presentation by SkyCop in Selkirk. We thank everybody for being here to see this, and I'm just going to let y'all have a floor. We do not, we'll have a little discussion, we'll have some questions from council members, or the mayor, glad to see you here, appreciate you coming, and we are not going to have an executive session, so we'll just do the presentation and get y'all to answer some questions, and then maybe take a break before our work session. Go ahead.
All right. I want to thank everybody for their time, I really appreciate the mayor and his vision to get this city moving in the right direction, so I think your vision with the safety is commendable. I want to thank the city council for allowing us to come in and show our technology. One of the things that we hope that we've accomplished today is it's extremely easy for anyone with a ladder or a bucket truck to ride around town with a camera. The cameras are going to do their job, they're going to gather data, and it's how we process that data that the system has captured that will make a difference in deterring crime, helping solve, and they'll give you plenty of real-life situations of solving that crime. I can give you just one briefly. This past week, I got a phone call, one of our customers on a farm, something was stolen. Wasn't real sure which day it was, it was a period of roughly four days, and so for us to have helped in this situation, somebody would have had to volunteer to sit there and watch four days of video to see when that piece of equipment rode out of there. There was a question about a suspicious vehicle, it was a red Dodge Ram, that's all we had. So instead of going through four days of video, I go into our system, I type in red Dodge Ford pickup truck Ram in that order, and populates, off that camera populated four hits. The four hits, we were able to eliminate three. The fourth hit was an out-of-town from Ohio, goes through, our SkyCop's blinking, apparently he's aware of it, he's taking his tag off the truck. In Ohio, though, you have to have a tag on the front of the truck. Well, the guy removed the tag off the back of his truck, we got the tag off the front of the truck. So, again, that's just a quick story to tell you that I think what separates SkyCop from everybody, now, anybody in this arena, is the way that they process the information, the way that the information is stored, and the way, and most important thing is the way that that information is retrieved. So with that, I'm going to introduce, this is Greg Knuckles and Joe Patti, the SkyCop is based in Memphis, Tennessee. Greg is the CEO and president, and has done a really good job, and that's why I partnered with Greg in that. This technology is not available in Alabama, really in this Alabama, Georgia, Panhandle of Florida. So we're, this will be a new opportunity for the city to bring some phenomenal technology. And so with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Greg.
Thank you very much, Rick, and thank you, everybody. It's so nice to be in a meeting that, you know, is something other than from here up, you know, because for the last year, I've been in the Zoom meetings, and it's been from here up. So now I get to stand up and actually talk to, talk to Rick. Just reiterating that Rick said, thank you so much for the opportunity, we're here to help you, if we can do that, then we really look forward to it. We've done this, you know, the things that Joe's going to talk about probably will be a little bit about his experience from a law enforcement standpoint and using our product, and then also the amount, a level of expertise that I think that we have because of the space that we're in. We really live in this space, we live in, working with municipalities, we work, you know, on remote surveillance systems and technology that's more difficult to do than what a lot of people want it to. So, thank you again, and with that, I'm going to let Joe Patti carry on with the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, everyone, thanks again for having us. Council, mayor, everyone, thank you very much for the opportunity to come speak to you. I'm Joe Patti. My background is law enforcement, I spent 27 years on the Memphis Police Department, started out patrol, all the way up to, the last eight years I was there, I was a video surveillance manager for the Real-Time Crime Center, where I was over the department's 2,000 cameras, we had 500 SkyCops throughout the city, a couple hundred LBRs, we had in-car video, body cams, so I was over that entire organization. So, I bring a lot of experience to the table when I come to these towns and cities and municipalities about what you need to do, how you need to get forward, with how, what's the footprint you need to start, because a lot of people, I'm not, I'm not from the sales world, I don't come from a, you know, I'm just here to push a product, I come here as a consultant, I'll tell you what you need, instead of what you think, instead of what a salesman tells you what you need, I'll tell you what you actually need. I'll tell you how to get started, I'll tell you where to deploy these things, how to deploy these things, we can build these out of phases. So I bring the law enforcement side, because these, these SkyCops are an intricate tool, and especially in today's times when law enforcement struggles with attrition, they struggle with crime, we're seeing an uptick in crime across the country, it's not just exclusive to Selma, we see it everywhere, we're seeing problems with attrition with law enforcement everywhere. So anything that, as a city council, as your public elected officials, as a committee, you can do to put a tool in a police officer's toolbox, you really have that obligation to try to do that, because they need every tool they can get. And we can augment a lot of police routines and police activities and, by technology, where you can put a SkyCop on a pole, on a camera somewhere, there's a 24-hour police presence at that point. Now, he doesn't need a break, doesn't need vacation, doesn't need benefits, he's there 24 hours a day, watching, recording, whatever it is we decide to do, whatever. So that, I wanted to kind of give you a background of what I do, I'm a security consultant for SkyCop now, so we travel, I was so impressed with the product while I was with Memphis, that when I retired, I wanted to go to work for this company, because I'm leading this company. It's a, you know, it's a locally-owned business in Memphis, we're not a big corporation, you have a problem, you call, you talk to us, you know, talk to the customer service number, and they'll give you a ticket number, you talk to us, we'll fix the problem, we're responsible for your problem, we have a vested interest in your problem, so that's what I think the advantage of us, of being the SkyCop. Kind of just touched on what SkyCop is, you know, our mission is to provide law enforcement, that was where our space started, SkyCop was the original company that patented this box. We were the first people to put cameras, a cellular router, and recorder out on the edge and put it on a pole. We were the first people to do that. We were in that space first. We have the discipline, we have the R and D of almost 15 years of good ways to do it, better ways to do it, wrong ways to do it, and what you see in the end result is years of R and D of this product. So we're not just jumping into this, throwing some stuff together, hey, this may work, we're going to throw this on a pole, and you guys just check it, we appreciate it. That's not how we work. So, that is our mission, our values, which is what I told you, the customer comes first. Our name's on that box, it's our reputation. We don't want to have one single customer that doesn't, is not happy, because that can just resonate among everyone. So, we don't, we take our customers very seriously and our products very seriously. What do we do? We develop, manufacture, and provide over security. Over security is blue lights. Anybody put a camera on a pole, they probably saw cameras walking in this building, you probably didn't notice. Yeah, the blue lights can be on and off, just doing that for demonstration purposes, but most cameras just blend into the atmosphere there and blend in the environment. Ours, it's a blue light deterrent, there's absolutely a level of, you got a deterrent level, and you got a, you got a live viewing level, and then you have prosecution level. So we have all three of those, whereas a regular camera might just have, I'm able to monitor and then I'm able to prosecute based on video evidence, if it's working at the time. Why do we turn on one activity? So, most cost-effective thing, we talked about this earlier, this is a full-time police officer on a pole, this is a full-time, it's always running, it's always recording, it's checking everything. Our boxes can be equipped with, for the very minimum, with just video cameras, to license plate technology, gunshot detection technology, missing one?
Biologic.
Yeah, for the most part, those are the three main things. And in Memphis, we had a, we had a, we had a hybrid of all of it. We had license plate technology down on Beale Street, you may have heard of Beale Street, we had a lot of problems, shootings, we had gunshot detection cameras there, there were SkyCop products, if an individual fired a gun anywhere on the street, the system would detect it, triangulate it down to within one foot, and then it would spin the camera around, zoom right in on the suspect, let's get a facial shot of him, and then it's going to back out, so he's not going to stay put, and so we know which way he ran. So, I personally saw, personally handed that video off to cases, to detectives many times, and we made many arrests from that, from that technology. I can't even tell you how many arrests we made based on license plate technology. It's just a, it's an incredible tool, it's indiscriminate, it doesn't care, it just reads those tags every time they go by, it doesn't know who you are, but it tracks that information as far as the license plate, and enters that into a database, it runs it through National Crime Information Center, where all of your wanted parties, your stolen cars, terrorist lists, your Amber Alerts, your Silver Alerts, all of those are in that database, and it feeds it to that database, and then alerts the, alerts the local authorities, hopefully the police department. So, that's what the license plate technology does, that is, those are some of the things, we talk about cost-effective ways of doing that. Here are some of the tools that we use. These are our SkyCop mobile trailers, solar powered, basically, with a battery and generator backup, it's all cell-contained, can be outfitted with license plate technology, speed radar signs, gunshot detection, cameras, it's just a mobile unit altogether, really good for moving around festivals and parking lots and stuff like that, so that's, Memphis had 23 of these when I was there, so we use them all around the city, we move them quite a bit, and they just, they stayed employed 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, so. Some of our other technologies, this is what we're looking at, we have an example out here in the room here, is our standard box, we can customize the labels of the logo, have your information on it, Selma Police, City of Selma, however you want to do it. There's a license plate reader on the top left, there's a license plate reader down below that, that's a separate camera by itself, you go by that, you go by that at night, 100 miles an hour, doesn't matter, we're going to catch your tag. This is different deployments we have, we've had both in private sector and the public sector, so we, we are in both spaces, not just private or public sector. A little bit of information about, I just talked about briefly about how the LPR technology works, you send it through the whole database, comes back down, all of this takes place, the time you run past that, the time you pass by that tag reader, and the time that law enforcement is notified of a hit is less than 10 seconds. So, that's how fast everything processes. And if the tag goes by and there's no correlation to any kind of hit or warrant, then nothing happens, it's just there. But what's nice about this, say, this is out in the neighborhood, tag goes by, a car goes by, they haven't done anything, they're not wanted, they're not on list, they're not on any kind of BOLO list, they just go by, and a few minutes later, they commit a crime, and they go off, they don't come back past this camera, they just go off. Well, now, we all, we don't, we didn't have a moment, because it wasn't wanted, but the detectives can go back and say, based on maybe eyewitnesses, there was a red Camaro. Now we have technology, we just go back, up to 30, 90, 60 days, whatever you want, and look for a red Camaro to pass by this. If you can find that red Camaro in the same vicinity of the crime, they're at the same time, well, that gives you a problem cause to move forward with your investigation. Now we have a suspect in the same area, the vicinity of the crime. So now, so the technology works, I would say, as a, on the front end, but it also works as an investigation as well. So, that's the, that's the advantage of having license plate technology, it's not just looking for the act of warrants, but it is critical in police investigation after the fact, because it can definitely put people who say they weren't in the area, in that area. This is kind of just an idea of what our, our license plate technology database looks like, this is our web, this is a web-based program, these are just different cameras throughout, this is the Memphis region, the big ones are clustered, or the little circles are clusters, so we have a much bigger footprint, and that's just kind of zoned in Memphis, and if you were using software, you would just click on those, and you could set your times, or you could just click them all on at such a time, you're looking for someone citywide, countywide, statewide, wherever you needed, we can do all that. Our system can tell what color the car is, our system can tell us what type of car it was, you know, Toyota, Corolla, whatever it is, it can tell us, and also, a lot of systems nowadays won't read, they look for, the AI technology looks for a license plate, and if it doesn't see the license plate, nothing happened, didn't see a car. Our system looks for a car first, then looks for the license plate, so we see a car first, we record a car, we have all the information on the car, so the license plate is secondary, and if there's no tag on the car, then we still have the car. We know the criminals will take off tags, doesn't matter, we'll get them, we know they're going to swap tags, doesn't matter, we're going to get them, we know they're going to put a paper tag on there with a drive-out tag, doesn't matter, we're going to get them, we're going to get that read every time, whereas a lot of systems just look for the tag, if there's not a tag there, then that car did not exist in their system. This is something that local law enforcement can do, it's a BOLO, be on the lookout for, and it can be internal, so it's not, it doesn't go into the national database. Let's say a detective had an incident where he had a crime, and there was a white pickup truck involved, he has, he has not developed a suspect from it yet, so he puts this in the system, he just had a tag, maybe he has a partial tag, he puts that in the system, and as soon as that tag goes through and passes by one readers, he gets a notification, whether it's an email, text, immediately, so that he can find this vehicle, and once he sees where this vehicle is being, you know, where the tag is red, then he can start investigation from there, start looking for this vehicle, and if he has a partial tag, now he has a full tag, so we can move forward with investigation like that. This is a typical license plate technology. I don't care who makes a license plate reader, this is what you're going to get at night. We're going to read the tag, you can see the tag, we're going to read that tag, you got it right. Can you tell anything about that car? Nothing. That's what, if you just have a license plate reader, that's what you're going to get at night. Tag, you'll get a tag, but you will not get a car. Same cameras, same location, SkyCop video, same car. Same car. This is the color shot of it at night, but this is the video side of it. So, I can work with this in law enforcement, but I like this, because now, I can tell who's in the car, I have an idea, I can tell what kind of car this is, I can look for the unique identification features, like the faded paint on the top, that will, that's excellent information in law enforcement. I don't care what kind of car it is, not a lot of these have this on top, so that puts me in perfect, perfect line to move forward with my investigation. That's why our system is, like I said, once again, law enforcement-driven, law enforcement data, law enforcement experience goes into these boxes. It's not just corporations thinking, hey, I'm going to sell you this, I know what works in this box, I know what law enforcement needs, because I was there, I know what the technology, I know the limits of it. So I help law enforcement with their technologies. This is in Osceola, Arkansas, they were, we put this, we put 32 cameras throughout their housing authorities, believe they love this so much that now they advertise for us, welcome to our housing community, you're protected by SkyCop.
We didn't ask them to do this, they just called one day, asked our permission, would you allow us to put your name on a billboard? And being, you know, the good CEO, I am, I said, absolutely.
Totally agree. Two weeks after putting these cameras on live, there was a homicide that occurred in the housing authority, almost underneath one of our SkyCops. Immediately arrest was made, prosecution, everything, clearly it was shooting at each other, just within two weeks. And I will tell you what a SkyCop, I'll tell you about anything you do in law enforcement, this is not a magic wand, okay, I'm not going to tell you that SkyCop is going to save the City of Selma, we're going to stop all the problems here. It is absolutely a tool, just a tool that you can use in your toolbox. No one has that magic wand, no one. The problems you're experiencing here are no different from many other cities, it's a combination of a lot of things, okay? A lot of things, a lot of different levels, a lot of different verticals, but you can affect the things you can affect now, that's what I'm telling you. You can make those differences now, there are some things you can change now. Prosecution of gang members, criminals is one of them. Sometimes, law enforcement has, an incident happened, and there's no witnesses, even though we know there's witnesses, but nobody wants to talk. Video cameras talk, tell you who's on the scene, show us what happens. Prosecution can use that, make those arrests, get those bad elements out of society, we can fix other problems once we address that one. We're not going to be able to fix a lot of these problems until we fix the crime issue, and it's almost most certain. Big elephant in the room in every city is fixing the crime problem, how do you do that? It's not an easy solution, but it starts with something, some sort of enforcement, some sort of presence of law enforcement and prosecution that tells criminals, if we catch you, you committed crime, we're going to catch you, we're going to prosecute you, we're going to send you to jail, and you're going to stay there for a while, too. That's our footprint, I think we're in 18 states, both private, law enforcement, government, we're not just in Memphis, we're not just a regional company, we're all across the country now, we go as far as Washington State there. That's what the Memphis deployment looks like, those are SkyCop cameras, all around the city of Memphis, outside, in the county, across the river into West Memphis, that's the point, but just in Memphis, we have thick, big footprints in other cities, this is the Memphis, where SkyCop originated, this is our footprint there. These are some of our law enforcement partners throughout the country. We do commercial deployments, we talked about, our system can be connected via cellular, point-to-point radios, however, you know, we customize it however the customer needs, or whatever needs are of the customer. Some more examples, commercial deployments, deployments, you know, we can put them on side of buildings, we can do corner mounts, we can do roof mounts, parapet mounts, so, and we have big models, we have small models, so very customizable. This is, some of the models we use in our residential neighborhoods, some neighborhoods, aesthetics matter, you know, aesthetics matter, so they like these, you know, these painted to match the poles, and we can do that, so we do that, but that's, that's a two-camera license, that's a two-camera video system with a license plate reader on it, very overt, just kind of, it's still got blue lights at everything at night, but it is very technical reason, so that's, that's our residential as well. When SkyCop comes out, we do these site surveys to show you where exactly the camera view will see, what the range is, so that you, as the customer, sees where exactly and how the coverage is going to be, you know, exactly how that's going to be laid out, what that looks like, and.
So after a discussion with the customer, and how we, when we start learning about areas that they may need some of this type of equipment, we do a overview map that'll show, you know, all the locations that they're interested in, and then we drill it down a little bit further, and we're kind of camera specialists, or nerds, if you will. There's 100,000 cameras, at least, in the market, and each one of them does something a little bit different, and we, our goal is to find the right camera for that particular situation, outside environments, lighting, tree structures, lots of things can come into play when you're in outdoor environment, so having the knowledge and the expertise to pick the right camera for the situation is a pretty important thing. So we, when we, when we design that, we take that into account, but then we also will show, you know, these are views, the red lines, like how far that could see at night, you know, what, and also what kind of resolution you'll get, you know, if I'm 100 feet away, if I'm not using an 8 megapixel that gives me X, I'm not going to start talking nerd on you, but it takes a lot of pixels to be able to identify a human, you know, a person's face, but for situational awareness, it doesn't take as much, oh, I can see, I know that there's somebody there, I know that they got a red shirt on, things like that, so it's a lot of conversation with the customer, and making sure we understand what the goal is, and what are we trying to accomplish with that system.
Absolutely, and I'll just talk about that more when we get to what is, is next to add. So, what steps, what could we do? So, if SkyCop is something you want to move forward with, then we come in, we work with your city council, your police department, we figure out where your hotspots are, based on your own crime data. We look at the, we look at the topography of your city, we look at everything we can, and we work with the police chief, and we make sure that, obviously, it's his decision, his or her decision where that needs to go, but we make recommendations based on crime data, where exactly you want to put this, does that match the location, do we have a pole available to put this on, does it make sense to put this here, do we need to add license plate technology here, do we need to add gunshot detection here, what is the best fit for you? That's, that's where SkyCop is different, we're not just, we're not going to come in and just, here's our catalog, you pick what you want, and we'll put it up for you. We want to make sure that what you're getting is useful, not only useful, but makes sense for you as your community. It's not just a cookie cutter approach, it is a customized approach that we do all day long for other cities and other municipalities, so I think that we have the advantage of doing that. I have that experience from Memphis, from employing, you know, 500 of these things throughout the city, where do you put those, and how do that best fit what you're doing?
Yeah, and I would just close with, when we showed you all those locations across the country, those are people that called us. We don't have a marketing company, we're not a marketing company, we should be a much better marketing company than what we are, but all of those are people that found out about us from a news article, our police department, and our phone ring, and we answered it, and we helped them, and they liked it. So, I'd love to do the same thing here.
Yeah, we're, I'm the marketing department guy today with a hat, but normally, I'm the consultant, so, just like you said, people call us because our products work. Word of mouth is incredibly important to us, and it drives our business across the country, so, that's our presentation, please.
I'd like to add a little bit more of that before we open it up. Another thing that I think is really important is, and it circles back to where I started this conversation this afternoon, not only are we going to design that system, not only are we going to install that system, maintain that system, but most importantly, we're going to, as a team, and you can see, it's going to be policemen, retired policemen, former policemen, that are going to help this police department to train and to use that technology to the benefit of this city. And that, again, circles back to what I was saying, it's real easy to hang a camera, it's what you do with that information that will determine whether this expenditure for the City of Selma was well-placed. And so with that, again, I'm going to say thank you for your time, and we'll open it up for questions.
Yeah, I thank you, thank you, and I, to what he said, I recently went into a small town that had deployed an old system, and they had some cameras around the city, and I was amazed, when I walked in, they had like almost 30 cameras, and they, it was on a 27-inch monitor, just trying to monitor 30 cameras, like, why don't you have a bigger monitor, man, that's just common sense here. Like, I don't know, our integrator said this is what we needed, there's no way you need to be monitoring 30 cameras on a monitor like this, you know, you didn't have a big monitor. It's like the side of a business car, you can't see anything on that, you get them all the cameras up. It's just little things like that, that just get under my skin, because a lot of integrators will do that, when it's not done right, it just, that just gets under my skin, and because they come from law enforcement, I kind of take it personal, it's almost like they took advantage of them, they didn't really, law enforcement didn't always know the questions to ask, you know, the integrator, so that's where they just got it, you know, so, it's like going into a car dealership and just not knowing what you want, and driving out there with a Corvette when you really just needed a, you know, a sedan, so, that was, just wanted to throw that vocabulary out there.
And we will design a video wall based on the space available, and if you decide to move forward and get some numbers from us, all of that will be in that proposal.
Is a question, Tim?
Yes.
Yeah, I was going to say, if any council members had any questions, go ahead.
Good afternoon, I have two questions. The first one would be...
The first one would be, how would it detect gunshots? I see it on the vlog, but I want you to talk a little bit about gunshots.
So the gunshot detector is, is our box with PTZ camera on it, and we've...
Explain what that means.
I'm sorry, pan tilt zoom, the dome cameras that move, they, you know, like this is a real quick camera, one-on-one, these are fixed cameras. So they, they don't spin around, they're just fixed on a particular, whereas a dome camera, PTZ, it moves around, it zooms in, it does all that, so it's movable, it's a mechanical lens. So we add a microphone array on top, and it basically look, listens for the gun, the gun range, the gunshot range in the sound vessel system. So it, once it hears a gunshot, it triangulates that, those three microphone arrays on top, and points right down to it, so right down within a foot of where the gunshot was detected. It then, it then sends a signal to that camera, spin around, and zoom in on that individual. Where the camera may have been looking this way, just because that's the last place it was left, and the gunshot was over here, it'll spin it around and go straight into that individual, and then back out, because we know they're gonna take off running.
And then also, at, at the police station, there's immediate notification there that, hey, a gunshot went off. We have a program that pops up a map, and it says it just went off at this location. So it gives them, you know, not, hey, a gunshot went off somewhere, it's, no, no, gunshot went off right here in this location. It's probably about a five-hundred-foot radius, so it's not a, you know, massive, you know, area. There's, there's really only maybe one or two other companies that do this in the outdoor space when it comes to gunshot detection. The largest one is ShotSpotter, and they don't, I don't, to the last of my knowledge, they don't use camera technology. They basically put sensors all over the city or square mile, and, and they get a notification, and then they just send a police officer out to that area to see, I guess, if somebody's bleeding, or knock on the doors to see if something happened. So that's, that's kinda how that...
Yeah, there are two different types of gunshot. Like you said, SpotShire, which is just identification system, a notification system. And then our system is actually a notification and an identification system. So the, the notification system is one level, but from what I've seen in other cities, we, you know, it just, all it does is just really increase the call of police, for police, because this thing's gonna go off, and then when they get there, there's no one there, or there's maybe some shell casings that can be tagged, maybe later on used. But at least with another system, with the identification system, now you have, you know, suspect information, you have video, so that helps, that aids even more.
What Memphis has done, and I think it was a good idea, where they put our gunshot detection, they have their surveillance cameras as well, they have some fixed ones just like this, but they also have the PT, the pan tilt zoom that Joe mentioned, but they also have the license plate cameras. So the last instance that I saw, cameras looking at a convenience store next to an affordable housing unit, gunshots go, it turns, it was a hundred and eighty degrees, turned a hundred and eighty degrees, zoomed in, it backs out. So why does it back out? Well, if you've ever been shot or shot at somebody, you're gonna move real quick. So it zooms in and then it starts zooming back, because those people disperse very quickly. So that's the purpose of that. But then when they get in their car and they drive by, guess what? They got their tag. Now we know vehicles registration information, our police do, we don't. So those three combined can be very powerful.
I have a question. Who, who's monitoring the system real time?
So it would be whoever you design in the police department. You know, dispatch, most time, if it's a small city, it's dispatch, can watch the cameras. Or if you have someone assigned to, you know, to solve a case on them. The availability of personnel, it can be a civilian that does it. But like I said, most small towns, it's the dispatch and watch the cameras. And I will tell you, most of the time, when you're watching cameras, there's nothing going on. So, you know, ninety-nine percent of the time, there's nothing going on with the camera. It's just that one percent you're looking for. So we can, you know, there's, there's certain analytical alarms that we can set off. The license plate technology just runs in the background, and unless there's an alert, you don't hear from it. And so if there's a tag, stolen or whatever, a stolen car, then that's when you hear from it. So I wouldn't focus a whole lot on monitoring the cameras, because technology has kinda taken that human interface out. We can do certain rules and have certain criteria that will alert you when you need to know. But kinda the old days of just watching cameras, there's really no point in that, because so much technology is out there to keep you from having to do that. Would that be a good explanation?
I think it is, and I'll add a little bit to that. With the technology available, let's just use Splashpad as an example. Cameras are watching Splashpad during the day, and nobody can sit there and watch cameras all day long. You just can't do it, it's been proven. With this technology, the Splashpad closes at six o'clock. Now this camera system knows that nobody's supposed to be at that Splashpad at six o'clock. The system has the ability to notify the center, whomever, wherever that is, that there's somebody there. You can then go on, say, you know, you're in restricted areas, closed, please leave. Watch them, and they'll leave, dispatch. So there's a lot of ways to take the technology where you're not having somebody just staring at that screen, but something's gonna grab their attention. There's gonna be an alarm that go, it may be a red box that pops up. Green box, they're in an area, you know, they're green, they're not bothering anything, but they go in this restricted area, that box turns red. And it can push notifications, emails, text messages.
Yes, I heard you mention that SkyCop's based up to, but, you know, sometimes it's a companion court. Have y'all ever been in court where the DA, you know, got a good case, and then you got the defense attorney come in and eat it up? Has there been a case where the SkyCop didn't do what it's supposed to do, or the defense found a way to beat that case because of something with rights with the camera? Have y'all been deceived?
So I will tell you this, in the ten years that I did that, with Memphis, and thousands of cases with video, I never once had to testify ever about the validity of the, of the video or what was on the video. Video speaks for itself. The only, only thing an defense attorney can argue is, try to argue that's not him, that's not his suspect, or that's not his client. That's the only thing I've ever heard. But as far as challenging the technology, I've never once had to testify about that.
So it's been pretty good?
Yes, sir.
Awesome. Got a question. Just using imagination right now. This is a police car, this is in that facility where the gunshots are. Do that, why, is it some kind of way that he can pick it up off an app of maybe a laptop or something he have in his car, detecting it at that point, if you write that down the street, where he went to, where we got this setup at, and they called him and said it's right there, and he missed out on it right in the end of there?
So at the very moment, we don't have it where it notifies the car immediately, it just notifies dispatch. Dispatch is right there, they get, they see the map, they see the video, they get the alert. So they're right, there's, there's not even that timeframe anymore. We have someone who has to call in, take down the call, and then dispatch. Dispatch gets it right then, so they can immediately dispatch. Gunshot detection just went off, Bane and Butler, whatever it is. Technology will advance to the point where that could be, if a car has a terminal in it, then yes, a laptop in it absolutely.
I mean, eventually I could see, you know, so my job is to kinda see the future or expect what's gonna come down the road. And depending on how sophisticated an agency gets, you'll know where that car is, and you know where that, that GPS location is of that event, and it would notify the closest available vehicle, you know, because they'll, at one time, they'll have, you know, in service or not in service, you know? I mean, I'm, I'm on a call, or I'm not on a call. And, and it would handle, in the future, I see this all being handled really without even a dispatch having to do anything. It would automatically send that to the closest available officer, you know? Thirteen Water Street, gunshot event validated, you know? Go en route. That's not today, but I, I see that coming.
Good question, very good question.
I do have another question, and then I guess if...
Go ahead, another one, go ahead.
Okay. On for the cost, is there a ballpark figure of the cost of these cameras and the maintenance and repair costs?
Yeah, so that is a great question, and it's, it's a little difficult to say, but if I was gonna budget, I would budget a high number, and then I'd like to come in and make you really feel good about it. So, you know, I would, I would budget ten thousand dollars per unit. Reality is gonna be a lot less than that, but if, you know, when you talk about gunshot detection, license plate, and all the, you know, if you talk about all that kinda stuff, that gunshot detection really drives costs down.
So for everything on one, on one city, you're budgeting ten thousand?
Well, that would be a complete cost of this system at a very high level. I would, I would say, depending on, we do a lot of leasing, we do a lot of, a lot of things that to, whatever the city is, you know, budgeted for, we would try to work with the city to make it very powerful to procure it if they felt like it was a good solution for them. So I think Memphis, they put out seventy every year. We're in the process, we're doing those seventy right now, and I wanna say it's three hundred fifty thousand for the seventy. So there's, you know, that's, that obviously that's not ten thousand dollars per unit. So really, we, we have to get to the next level where we say, hey, what do we wanna accomplish? How many, you know, because in some areas you may not need that much, but in some other area, I may need to load this thing up with a lot of technology. So, and there's a big difference between those two. So I, I get this question every time, and I wish I could say it's gonna be seventeen ninety-nine, or whatever the number is, but it's just very custom.
So is there a maintenance or repair cost?
It's usually a percentage of the total price, and it's typically twelve percent of that, of that price.
Is that the least program through this?
There is, yeah. And again, you know, we try to work with our customers, figure out what's the best, you know, how, how can we accomplish our goal and still meet whatever fiscal responsibilities that we have? You know, I'm in business, I have to do the same thing. So those are just discussions that, hey Greg, give us some options on this, or talk about this, or what can we think we could do here, and then we just do whatever we're gonna get there.
Monthly, a year? She wants to know whether it is monthly or a year, is that made?
Oh, oh, the, so the cost, the unit, the unit cost is, if you wanna just buy it outright, that'd be a one-time cost, so it could be, you know, unfortunate. Unfortunately, Memphis has stuff that's probably ten years old that still works. I, I would never recommend that. I would say, technology is changing very rapidly, and I would look at a five-year, basically a five-year timeframe of when technology's gonna jump to such a level that, you know, one, the equipment's old, these are computers, if you think about it, out on poles. Think about your computer. Have you ever had to reboot your computer? Have you ever had to update it? You know, so we're kinda about the same thing, but in a tough environment. So in a five-year, five-year timeframe, you know, I would always recommend to be thinking in those terms.
Agreed.
Yes, sir. Just 'cause technology comes a long way. The other thing we've seen is business communities really supporting these kinda programs, donations to the police department, that you, I would, I would, I would say pretty accurately that over three million dollars of equipment in Memphis was donated to them of our equipment. So, you know, different sized city, obviously, but these people went door-to-door in their neighborhoods raising money to, it's kinda humbling, quite frankly, to buy this.
Yeah, they would raise money in their neighborhood, donate that to a five oh three one...
Five oh one C three.
And then, then they, that organization would purchase the, the SkyCop and give it to the city. City would take it in as an asset, and they would put it in their neighborhood. So, you know, the tax write-off citizens of that neighborhood, they had this, they had the SkyCop that they wanted, and the city had an asset that was added to it. So no charge for them, so there is that, there is that as well.
And business, you know, business owners are certainly interested in those type things. St. Louis, you know, if y'all know anybody in St. Louis, how we call that foundation, in the last three years, I think they've bought twenty-eight trailers from us that have gunshot detection, license plate recognition, and the most expensive cameras that I would probably never recommend on them, all, all by business donations. Then it was, it's amazing.
Greg, any other questions? Mayor, do you have any question before?
Good afternoon. Do you have any deployments in Alabama?
Sir?
Do you have any systems deployed in Alabama?
Yes, we have two on Water Avenue that were donated to the police department. The information that's in them, the tag reads. There is one in Benton that has been very successful. The county has one at a transfer station that they use to cut down on illegal dumping in that transfer station. This is a new, this is new to Alabama. Selma would be that shining light on the heels, to, to steal a phrase. It would be a big deal for Selma to have this technology in here. It's a, it is a proven technology that, and Joe really hit it. It was, it was a company that evolved by interacting with police agencies, not trying to just go out and push a product, but to really sit down and listen to the policing community. This is what we need, this is how we process things, this is the way we would really like it. And, and because SkyCop is a locally-owned business, it's continuously evolving, and Greg's constantly pulling knowledge from all kinds of agencies, as, you know, what do you need? Not what we want you to have, so.
Hey Mayor, like we said earlier, we're terrible about our own marketing. So just random stories that we pull off the internet, these are, you know, all across different states. These are all SkyCop arrest or news article related. Just to go through a few of them.
Mayor, what we have noticed is when a city puts it in our neighborhood, we, typically the next city over, for example, in Memphis, now West Memphis, Arkansas, has done the same thing. South Haven, Mississippi has done the same thing. And Bellmead, Tennessee, we just signed a contract with the city right next to them. So it, it seems like it, and again, we're not a very good marketing company, we're not out talking to these people, but once it's there and all these news articles start happening, the city next door calls us, and so that's...
And these agencies are sharing their information with one another? And that's done just simply by letter? That gives SkyCop the authority to allow those tag reads to go into that municipality, because they are so close together. You know, it'd be like with us in, say, Benton, or us in Lounes, or Dallas and Perry, or because criminals are coming in from out of town, and if they're stationed here and they're headed out of town, it's just to the benefit of everybody around.
How do you push a business model to deliver damaged units?
Sir, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm...
Your business, your business model for addressing damaged units?
Okay, I'm glad you brought that up. Yes.
Do you want it shot up or whatever?
I'm gonna let them address that.
I was wondering if this was gonna be the first meeting I've ever been to that somebody didn't say, don't they get shot? Because every meeting I get that, that question, and I'll say, yeah. I have, I've had, I think, five. One in Toledo, Ohio, we have seventy units there. A man called us and begged us to put one in his neighborhood because of the drug activity. It had to be donated to the police department, it was. The day they put it up, the guy walked up with an AK and unloaded on it. The police did the right thing, went and got it, and re-put it back up the next day. So, you know, making a point to that, that neighborhood, that we, you know, they're here, and they're gonna stay. But, you know, if I had to count, I think maybe five in the history of thousands. There's been cities that said, it's gonna get shot, it's gonna get shot. I said, not a problem, I'll put Kevlar in it. So we outlawed, we outfitted with Kevlar. That's a...
I mean, you've been...
Never been shot, but yeah.
You've been in an accident, and one is knocked down, it's damaged. What's your business policy on that?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Our business policy on that is, if you... Our business policy on that is, if you, you know, somebody has to buy a new one, and it's probably going to be the insurance company, the driver that hit the pole, that their insurance is going to have to buy a new one. I mean, we obviously, I mean, I don't know any manufacturer that can, you know, warrant against that. From an equipment standpoint, we will stand behind our equipment, but we, you know, if somebody knocks a pole down, it's hard to...
Was the pole down, Mr.? Pole made on, Mr.? You're liable. Also, the city, the city, are you liable?
Well, I mean, I don't, I don't know, I just say, I can't, I'm not, we're not going to replace things if you're knocking down a pole. I do a lot of things, a lot of things, but unfortunately, that wouldn't be, you know, something that'd be very, I mean, if you wanted me to come back the next year to be in business, I probably wouldn't do it. But, I mean, if we knocked off a pole, Joe, how many of you have knocked off a pole?
You know, I think, at all the Memphis locations, I had two knocked down, and I was, you know, I was able to repair them. So, even when they have, one time they shot at one, you know, it, I just, we fixed the box, we replaced the one camera that was damaged. It was not a total loss. Those times are not a total loss. It's just, it's just like crashing a car, you know, it's, it's not always a total loss, we can fix it, but...
Now, if we're on every pole, I might make some exceptions.
Do y'all have some kind of insurance with these?
You know, we never, we haven't, that's a great question, we've never been asked, but I'm not sure that we couldn't do that.
Something like a state of warranty or insurance?
There would have to be insurance, there's no way to warranty human activity, and then we just, if that's a business model, we would survive.
If that was something that we needed to do, then I would, you know, then I would go and try to find, you know, someone that could insure that. I think it would be very safe, that on the insurance side.
One of our, one of our competitors loves to tell you that, now, we don't care what happens to it, they done it for the first one. Guess what? The second one, that little fine print, hits on you. So...
When y'all fix it though, I think, Mayor, who, if y'all fix one, who pays for the city?
There's several ways that we can do it. We can do it with a maintenance agreement, we can do it without a maintenance agreement. But what's really nice about our system is our system has a health monitoring piece to it, so that camera goes out, we don't know about it.
Yeah, I think you need to direct it to, he might not have heard that, did you hear that?
We can, we can put the system in, in our cost, when we're doing our pricing in our presentation, we can put a maintenance agreement in it, actually a service agreement, or we can leave the service agreement out of it. The really nice thing about the system is it babysits itself. It's going to tell us that something's wrong, that there's a reader down, that there's a camera offline. Now, the system's designed, if there's a camera offline, it's going to reboot itself first. It's going to try to fix itself. And if that's not successful, then we're going to roll the truck. And in Selma, that truck's not coming from Birmingham, that truck's not coming from Mobile, it's coming from Selma, Alabama.
All right, thank y'all, we've got about five minutes before we got to get our work session, so we're going to cut it off. If we can, you can just bash your cards out, you can ask anybody outside of the questions. Sorry, Greg, we're going to take a couple of questions. So, just make sure everybody has their information, and we appreciate y'all being here.
Thank you very much, we appreciate you.
Thank you again, Mayor, thank you, City Council, thank you.
And unless there's any other business we need to take after this, I'm going to put in a turn, special call, maybe. Anything is ready.
The country of origin, Memphis, Tennessee. Sir, I'm sorry, I can't... The program is written in Memphis, Tennessee. The programmers sit in Memphis, Tennessee. I can't answer that to you, that's privileged information.